All right, guys. Everybody will have a seat. I appreciate it. We're gonna get the meeting started. Yeah. Try to turn your cell phones on silent, please. All right. Welcome, everyone, to our night's city council meeting on Monday, September 23rd. We will have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. The invocation is gonna be by Pastor Pat Davy from Eastern Shore Presbyterian Church.
Gracious God, we thank you that as we come to you on this evening, we thank you, first of all, that we get to live in such a beautiful place that in so many ways reflects your beauty and your creativity. We thank you, Father, that we have a city council meeting that actually includes on the front end of the docket a word of prayer. Oh, God, as the ruler of the nations, your word teaches us that it is you who ultimately place people in positions of authority. And as Christian citizens, we are called to pray for those in authority over us. So, we do that. We pray for Mayor Sullivan. We pray for Councilman Boone, Burell, Conyers, Martin, and Robinson. And as they work through this evening's docket, as they hear from citizens in this community, as they deliberate and make decisions, oh, God, we pray for wisdom. We pray for clarity. We pray for decisions that are made this evening that they would lead to this community flourishing in ways that really do honor you and best serve the common good. We pray, Father, for a God-honoring decorum. Father, you have promised your people, in your word, wisdom from on high if we would but ask. And so, we ask for wisdom for this council this evening. We thank you, Father, for establishing civil government. We commit the evening to you, and we do that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, guys. All right. All right, guys. If I can get someone to approve the minutes from our September 9th, 2024 regular city council meeting.
I make a motion. Will you approve the minutes from September 9th meeting?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. We'll have a report from our mayor.
Good morning. Thank you.
Good morning.
Or good morning, good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much. First and foremost, I want to speak about the rumors and citizen communications about alleged resettlement of large numbers of immigrants to our community. To be clear, we have not seen or received any notification that that is happening, nor is it expected to happen in Fairhope. As you all know, Fairhope city officials do not write our national immigration laws, and our country has been debating immigration for as long as we've had a country. It's an issue where good and well-meaning people can and do disagree. Councilman Martin is one of those well-meaning people who signed on to what he thought was a simple petition to support the women and children impacted by the Ukrainian war. He never intended to bring illegal immigrants to our area. I want to make sure our residents understand that council members have no power individually. To have power, the council must be in session and pass a resolution ordinance by majority vote. They did not pass an ordinance or resolution in support of that petition. Councilman Martin signed this as an individual citizen and not as a public official. As a city, we do not support, nor do we have the resources to provide for large-scale resettlements of new arrivals to our country, specifically in Fairhope. I and other Fairhope officials have been in close contact with our federal delegation and state officials on this issue. We are appreciative of their open lines of communication, ongoing assistance, and responsiveness to local needs and insights. I want to personally thank the city council, our federal and state elected officials, State Representative Jennifer Fiddler, who is here tonight, members of the Bowen County Legislative Delegation, Bowen County Commissioner Matt McKenzie, who's also here, and the Bowen County Commission, Bowen County Sheriff Anthony Lowry, who is here along with some of his staff, and Sheriff Hoss Mack of the Alabama Sheriff's Association. We have been communicating all weekend, beginning at about 6:45 Saturday morning, to navigate this very complicated conversation. I want to assure the residents of Fairhope and Bowen County that all of your elected officials from the federal level to the local level are working together and do not take this situation lightly. The laws surrounding immigration are complex and change frequently, and too often, the tasks of enforcement and providing resources fall on the local communities that are least equipped to deal with the challenges. In Fairhope, we will enforce these laws, but we have little to say in how they are written. We will also enforce all local laws to make sure our community and citizens are safe. Our country has a long and proud history as a safe haven for those fleeing oppression, but our country also has a responsibility to ensure that immigration does not place undue burden on our citizens or on our limited resources. Enforcing immigration laws and fixing our flawed system should be a top priority for our federal government, and that conversation should include the perspective of our local officials with on-the-ground knowledge. So, I want to make this statement. I want to make it part of the record on behalf of myself and the city council. Again, this is not something we take lightly. We have received no notification of any kind of legal or illegal immigrants coming to Fairhope, and that's the statement that we have. So, moving on, my further report is I want to thank everybody who came out on this weekend for the coastal cleanup. The coastal cleanup went really well. Paige Tuberville, Paige Tuberville, that was her maiden name, Paige Crawford, and her staff, Beth Anne, do a great job organizing that and appreciate all the volunteers that come out. Also, want to thank Kim Creach for her work on the budget, and her staff do a great job with that. Also, just want to let everybody know that we are keeping a watchful eye on the hurricane that's out, that they expect to form in the Gulf. We're meeting with leadership team tomorrow just to talk about that. Hopefully, it will continue to visit our friends in Florida, but we are keeping a watchful eye on that as well. And want to remind everybody that it is homecoming week. We do have a homecoming parade on Thursday evening, and again, we're monitoring the weather and will make any necessary modifications that we need to do that. I also want to recognize our junior city council tonight. Lisa Hanks and her staff have been organizing the junior city council this year and appreciate Lisa and her efforts. So, I'm going to call you, and when I call you, if you'd stand up and just kind of wave to the crowd so they can see who you are. We have Jillian Nichols, who is our president. She's with Fairhope High School. We also have Jenna Cowell with the Fairhope High School. She's the president pro temp. Audrey Small is the project manager. Erin Fauch will be our social media manager. Grant Kelly is our secretary from Bay Shore Christian. Celia Cockey is also with St. Michael's Catholic High School. She's a member. Epsy Dorman with Bay Shore Christian. William Garner with Fairhope High School. Camille Hausmann with Fairhope High School. Ezra Langley with the Bowen Preparatory Academy. George Taubett with Fairhope High School. And Teagan Lanacek and Aiden Berry are both here tonight. They are your SGA president and vice president from Fairhope High School. They have been named ex officio members this year, and we're glad to have them joining us as well. This is our third or fourth year of the junior city council. Really excited to be able to expose these young students to government and how it operates, and just really love this program. And again, appreciate Lisa and Jenny taking on the junior city council this year. I think, you know, it's gonna be a fun year for everybody and look forward to hearing more of them. You'll see them at council meetings. You'll also see them at some of the committee meetings as they have assignments throughout the year, and hopefully, we'll be presenting some projects soon, just after the first of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good job, kids. Very proud of you. All right. Next on the agenda is a public participation on the agenda items five through 25. Agenda items five through 25. You have three minutes. Please come up to the podium and give your name and address, and you can speak on any one of those agenda items, five through 25.
Good evening. My name's Donald DeGuts. My home is 110 Blakeney Avenue in Fairhope. I'd like to speak to, let's see, item 20, with regards to a recent Board of Adjustments meeting where an applicant had come to ask for an exception adding vaping products and tobacco products to a new store they want to build next to the Jersey Mike's. And the reason why I associate it with item 20, because we're talking about the health of the community. We're talking about here fentanyl. We're talking about school-aged children. The Board of Adjustments allowed this exception. I spoke to them as well as I'm speaking to you. It seemed to go on deaf ears. They weren't really sure initially whether it was a good idea, but it did pass. And in the same manner that the city council refused to accept medical marijuana in town for whatever reasons, and everyone has their own opinions about that, Daphne Foley, I mean, Daphne, Spanish Fort, Foley, I think, will have medical marijuana. We do have vaping and tobacco products already in town. This particular business owner owns one in Daphne, and I'm thinking that if this is not included in the B-1 zoning, and the Board of Adjustments felt that it could be, I think this should have gone to city council. And I'd like you to perhaps intervene and reconsider that the health of our community and young people. I'd like to just point out that the Surgeon General has spoken on the subject, uncharacteristically issuing an advisory that e-cigarettes are the most commonly used tobacco product among U.S. youth. This location, this proposed location, is 1.1 miles right up the road from the high school and not far from the middle school. I'd also like to point out that our comprehensive plan, as it is today, and unfortunately and inexplicably not in the draft for some reason, I can address that in a minute, but the comprehensive plan says the plan shall be made with the general purpose of guiding and accomplishing a coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development of the municipality and its environs, which will, in accordance with present and future needs, and I'll emphasize, best promote health, safety, morals, order. So, that's in today's comprehensive plan. The Board of Adjustments ignored that. The planning department, in their list of criteria, ignored that, and I'd like the city council to be aware that I have strong feelings about inviting vaping and tobacco products into town. There are already stores producing that, and they can't explain why that was allowed then when it had to be an exception now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeGuts. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Agenda items five through 25. You have three minutes. Give your name, your address. Agenda items five through 25. Only the agenda items at this time.
Good evening. Deb Wakely, agenda item six. Live at 8856 Lakeview Drive here in Fairhope. Wanted to say, I'm not exactly sure what the substantive provision is on six and the underlying change on it, but it looks at first blush to me like it's an attempt to allow city employees to donate PTO to each other. Is that it?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that modernization of the leave provisions, and I know that all the city employees do as well. Along those lines, I'd like to ask you to consider, going forward, a potential other provision that could aid in workforce retention and quality of life issues. So, beyond the PTO donation pool, we're starting to see a move nationally and within the state of Alabama toward paid parental leave for employees that have new children, whether those be birthed children or adopted children. Birmingham implemented this last year. I would like to ask you to consider providing 12 weeks of paid time off in the case of a birth of a new child. Fairhope has a chance to be pretty well on the cutting edge of this in a developing area where there are a lot more municipalities that are offering it. Additionally, at the state level, we're starting to see moves toward allowing state employees and teachers to have paid parental leave instead of just pulling from their normal leave pool. It's important to have the opportunity for new parents to bond with their newborn without experiencing undue and unnecessary financial hardship. So, I'd like to ask you to consider expanding that going forward. Maybe we could look into an actuarial study. Maybe we can just kind of see where the budget would lie on that, but I'd like to ask you all to think about it. It's a great ROI in terms of employee retention, and the employees themselves really appreciate the opportunity to have a paycheck while they have a newborn. Formula's expensive, y'all.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you, my friend. Yeah, I think, we have FMLA, right? Is that what he's speaking on? Yeah, we...
Yeah, but FMLA is unpaid.
Yeah, you can, yes. So, I think we have some. We might look into bettering it, but I think we have something there. We always can get better. I have no problem with that.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. All right. All right, guys. Anybody else? Agenda items five through 25. All right, moving forward. All right, council comments.
Yeah, Council President, I guess that I'll address everybody in the room with just a few comments. I know why most of you are here tonight, and that is your concern for legal or illegal immigrants, you know, moving to your city. And, you know, the mayor said it, you know, at the outset of the meeting. Imagine my surprise. I've been on the council for 12 years along with Councilman Boone. We're the two senior members up here, and, you know, Jimmy and Jay's been on here eight years, Cory now four, so we're not new at this. And I would say that all of us have a pretty good idea of what's going on in the city most all the time. I speak to the mayor once or twice, or sometimes five, six, seven times a day, and talk to the staff and talk to other council members. So, just imagine my surprise when I start getting text messages and emails that we were inviting immigrants to live in our city. And folks, let me just tell you, that's just patently false. It's just false. We've never even had a conversation up here, never, not even in a work session, not even in a council meeting. I've never sat down with a single council member and had that conversation. I've never sat down with the mayor and had that conversation. So, these stories, they get legs and they take off. I really appreciate the people that have called and texted and emailed. I'm probably still about 20 behind today in responding, but, and I appreciate you coming out and having concern over this subject, but we just simply, you know, have not supported that. There's no, I heard there was a resolution on tonight's agenda. We were gonna pass a resolution inviting them into the city. Never happened. Never was on the agenda. We didn't get scared because all you were showing up and yanking off the agenda real quick. Just wasn't ever happening. We never talked about it, and we won't. So, just want y'all to know that. Sometimes, just call your elected officials. Have a little bit of faith. We pretty much, you know, we know how you feel about that subject, and, you know, and I'm gonna let, you know, Councilman Martin speak for himself, but I called him up and I said, "Man, what is, what is all this, you know, what is going on with this?" And he said, "Jack, you know, I signed a letter in 2022," an email, an email that he received. It was generic in nature, asking, "Do you support women and children displaced in the Ukraine war?" Didn't say in Fairhope, Alabama. Didn't say where, anywhere in the country. Just said, "Do you support it?" Well, who doesn't support women and children displaced by the Ukraine war? You know, he cares about people. He cares about women and children. That's what he signed on. Now, they took that program, somebody did, and turned it into something that it wasn't. He didn't have any control over that, and I want you to correct me if I say anything wrong, but that is what I understand has happened here. Nothing more, nothing less. There's not a big cover-up. There's no, there was never a hidden agenda. We're not gonna come back in a week and have, you know, a vote. I mean, it's just, it's not gonna happen. And like the mayor said, you know, there are things that the federal government might do that are beyond our control. There are things that the state government does that are beyond our control, but as far as I know, they don't have any plans to place people in Fairhope. And if they do, I think we would push back on that and say, "We can accommodate these people. We can't, we simply can't do it." So, I just, I wanted to express myself and tell people what I'm thinking, you know, because it really is, it's a tough world out there. There's so much stuff that goes on on social media. There's so much extreme. It's far left, it's far right, folks. It's exhausting. It's exhausting. We need some common sense. We need some common sense is what we need, and just think about that. I see so many people with the news media in here. Well, it wasn't on the 5 o'clock news and the 10 o'clock news, 'cause I think they probably knew. Where'd this come from? You know? The news is all of you showing up tonight. Now, that's news, but anyway, that's all I've got to say on the matter.
Thank you, Council.
Thank y'all for being here, though.
Yeah. Yeah. Jimmy?
Yeah, I'll address that, but first, I just want to say, love seeing the junior city council here. Always really liked that program and a lot of familiar faces. I mean, I see people I've known for years. Ezra Langley, I've probably known since, I don't even know how long, but lots of familiar faces. Y'all got a great group, and y'all picked a good night to come and be introduced.
You're rock stars.
This is democracy in action.
This is what it looks like.
I'm glad y'all are here tonight, and I appreciate y'all being here. And then, to address the reason everybody's here, you know, these stories on social media, they take legs, as Jack said, and I think when I first saw it, I kind of laughed about it. I thought, "Oh, that's crazy. Why would anybody put that out there?" And then, as momentum picked up and I kept hearing about it from friends and neighbors and other citizens that I don't know, I finally said, "Well, gosh, this has kind of built up into something so big." I did put something out on social media. It may have been a little too late to get the word out. If I had realized, I guess, at the beginning what kind of reaction this would get, I would have maybe put something out earlier, just dispelling any rumors, but we haven't heard anything from any reliable or credible sources. And anytime the source says, "Well, I heard from somebody," or "I read somewhere," then chances are, there's not much validity to it. But again, you know, Jack has already said that, you know, if we were to have any kind of knowledge of that, that's certainly something we would push back on. We're not prepared to accommodate 1,000 refugees in our town. I mean, that's not something we're seeking. We're not gonna be a sanctuary city. We don't have any desire to be that, and the last number I'd heard was up to 30,000 refugees coming here. So, you know, it went from 1,000 to 5,000 to 15 to 30, so again, it just, it's almost too much to hold down and not smile about it, but I do understand this is obviously a serious issue and probably should have put the word out earlier to people that, "Hey, we don't have any basis for where this is coming from, where this is reported, nothing credible." So, sorry that y'all are here and didn't maybe hear that earlier, but it's always good to come and see it in person and make sure you see with your own two eyes that that's not the case, so that's on my comments.
Thank you, Jimmy. Councilman Boone?
Well, everybody here that knows me knows how I feel about internet, social media, emails, and I don't deal with any of them. And unfortunately, this article came out, I had no idea it came out. Nobody talked to me about it up until I get a few dozen texts, "What's going on?" Well, I have to call them up to find out what's going on, 'cause I don't know. And then, now, forced me to read this dang social media post that they've got on there, which I just, that's 30 minutes I'll never get back. And all I can tell you is, you're not gonna go very far in life reading everything in social media and the internet and believing it and reacting to it without checking some things out, which, and common sense in this particular choice of social media would have been very good in the fact that this town's not up for all that. We're not supporting any of that. We're not doing anything with it. And I appreciate it, is whoever put that out there not do that anymore.
No, sir.
No, no.
No, sir. Please have a seat. Thank you.
Not do that anymore so that I don't have to read the internet and the social media. And again, you know, I can go very far believing this junk. I appreciate the time. That's all I got to say.
Well, guys, I guess y'all are here to hear me say something, I guess. I guess that's why everybody came out, so they could see me and hear me say something. So, 2022, 2022, an email came across my desk. I read the email. At the time of the email, we're at the height of the Ukraine war. Russia had just invaded Ukraine. On TV, you got women and children that were dying, displaced. I did my due diligence. This particular program, this refugee program, has been in existence since 1980s. It was a bipartisan deal, okay? It's a legal process. None of us here believes in anything illegal, I hope, and I hope and pray that those of you that know me know that I don't believe in anything illegal. So, it kind of hurt me at first when people took that with all the work that I've done and put into this community, that they would just believe such a thing as if, without calling, and the people that did call me, I really appreciate you guys. I really, really do. It helped me a lot, but you have to really be careful, man. We gotta cool the temperature a little bit here. We gotta come together. I know there's different parties. I do, but the deal is to compromise. The deal is for us to move forward as a people, not to divide. We've done that before, right? We've had that experience. We really have. Do we really want to repeat history over and over and over again? I hope not. I hope not. You know, there's a lot going on in the world right now, and the Bible says, "To whom much is given, much is expected." The U.S. is that expectation. We're given much. We're given much, and it's all about how you do things. It's all about the order of things. If we stay in order and we help people, I find nothing wrong with that, legally, orderly, nothing at all, and I would hope and pray that most of us feel the same way as far as our human system that God created. I would hope. Illegal? No. No. But a program that helps people survive persecution, oppression, that's been around, for some reason, there's guys smarter than me, they invented it 45 years ago. It was for a reason. I had a guy from the Air Force call me that was on those missions in Afghanistan when it started. I needed that call. The thing that I did, I have no idea that it was gonna turn into this. I had no idea. All I wanted to do was support that particular program because there were people that needed that program, and they asked me, and I said, "Yes. If you want to fault me for that, I'll take it. I'll take it." But the rest of it, the sensationalization, the fear factors, the pushing people against each other, the division, come on, guys. We're in this thing together. We're in this thing together. Let's work together. Let's call each other. Let's talk to each other. Let's communicate. Let's compromise to a win-win, not compete. We're on the same team. We just, we use that to sharpen iron. Proverbs. Iron sharpens iron. They were smarter than me. They created the different parties so they can come back with each other and they can make it right. It wasn't to fight for hostility, for fear, for hatred. It was to come together. Let's do that. Let's not make people write things that cause us to turn on each other and to fear other human beings because they're different. That's all I have to say. God bless you guys. Let's get on with the meeting. All right. Well, we'll have that at the end. We'll have that at the end. We'll have that at the end. Stick around. Let's do our business first, then we'll talk about it. All right. Agenda item number five is a final adoption. It's an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 1253 to rezone the property of Christopher Leib from R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to B4 Business and Professional District. The property is approximately 0.69 acres and is located at 761 Parker Road, introduced at the September 9th, 2024 city council meeting. Hunter?
Thank you, sir. And just for, you know, making sure one understands, this was heard at a previous meeting, we kind of make a more truncated presentation in the second one because we have discussed this and had a public hearing previously. So, just for a refresher, the property is, on the left-hand side, is a zoning, current zoning map, R1 is the property. There's two, actually, two lots. The area on the right shows an existing residential home with an empty lot adjacent to it. The request is to go B4. We do not approve a site plan within this rezoning request, but the intention is to turn the existing house across from the Publix into a office, not tear it down, not to do anything else. We discuss some of the uses that are in B4. That is... We discussed some of the uses that are in B four, uh, that is for business and professional, not your more intense uses um, that you might find in B two. The recommendation coming out of uh, the Planning Commission and unanimously and from staff was to approve with uh, a restriction of the uses uh, on B four, so to not allow some of those that could not be, would not be appropriate in that location, such as a convenience store, grocery, personal storage. And then the rezoning request is for the uses of professional office, any change in use other than professional office, so meet all applicable laws and regulations at the time of application. So just a quick update from the previous meeting, there, you know, Councilman Burrell, I believe you asked a question, could we make this site plan review coming, which has to come back to Planning Commission and City Council. And our council can speak up if I, if I'm misspeaking here, but I believe since that is procedural, you could make that condition without it being re-advertized, I'm not saying you should, that's completely up to you, I think we can handle. That's typically an administrative review, once it gets zoning, uh, we do that on a regular basis, but it's certainly within your.
Yeah, so the only thing we would, the reason that we say we would like to, we would have it done without re-advertisers, with, without putting a burden on this particular constituent or this business entity, correct?
If it was.
Otherwise, it's best to re-advertising it.
If it was about the use, dimensional requirements, specific restrictions, we would have to go back and re-advertise the public and have the public hearing again. This is a procedural thing. We're gonna review this site plan anyway.
Okay.
It would just be done at the staff level, so the only thing, if you wanted to add a site plan review would be that would be Planning Commission and City Council to review, would be the ultimate one to review that, which you relieve a lot of pressure from us, cause we're always the bad guys, telling them they have to meet the regulations, so if you want, you wanna be it, I have no problem with that. But it does add, it adds some things to the, the, you know, process, but otherwise, it's you know, I, I really don't have a.
Yeah, Councilman Burrell, you wanna speak on this, what he's saying is that.
I like the, the uh, the recommendations and, and the restrictions on the uses for the B four, but you know, and I, I appreciate you saying it does take the burden off of you, but you know, and the young man that's developing this and gonna put his office there, I believe him too, but you know, in the future, we don't know what's gonna happen, he may sell that, who knows? And we've been fooled before up here, you know, more than once, oh, I'm gonna do this, oh, no, but you allowed this, so it's perfectly within my right, and so I wanted to be able to tap the brakes if they, in fact, changed their mind with what they wanted to do and have a, a final site plan approval. We, we gotta stop that practice of, you know, it's the old trust but verify.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's, it's standard procedure for you to do a site review, but what we're saying now is we would like to see it again and vote on it, I think that's what Councilman Burrell is saying, just for checks and balances.
In the review procedures, if it was a straight zoning case, there's some uses in there or some things they would propose that would trigger the site plan review anyway.
Okay.
But you can implement a mandatory site plan review. If, if, for example, the plan that he submitted with his application, it was just a one-story office, that would go to, to a, straight to a building permit, and staff would review that for compliance with the zoning ordinance. If we do a mandatory site plan review, it will go to Planning Commission and then City Council for that review.
Okay. Alright, very good.
Otherwise, you're just, the site plan review you perform is to make sure that setbacks are correct, parking is correct and things such as that, right?
Buffers.
But not necessarily an allowed use.
Right.
And I think we've kinda carved out some of the uses that are not already going to um, it would go to the Board of Adjustment if, if, if it was not thought about, not in the current ordinance. But uh, in the white circles, as y'all know, on the, that go to the Board of Adjustment anyway.
It's just always, and, 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 and I've learned this anytime, you know, we're rezoning, you know, I think people get a little nervous, and I learn from these guys. You know, I, I never, I never think, unless we're holding somebody up and we're being redundant in fashion, I, I think the best way is to put those guardrails up. Um, for, you know, this council may not always be here, is what we worry about, you have to think forward. And we would like to have those things in place sometimes, I guess that's what Councilman Burrell is kinda suggesting. I don't know what this does to a delay or if we, you know, for it to come back to us as far as the party's concerned. That's the one thing I worry about.
And, and I won't speak to the delays because there are some, but that's, uh, the only thing I would kind of warn us against oh, long-term, is making standard zoning condition on things, because you in effect start to get into a site plan-driven, you know, PUD without the acreage requirements or anything else. And it becomes a little bit of a headache for staff to know in twenty years, hey, this standard B four has a required site plan review attached to it. We can, we, we do those sometimes with subdivisions when they can be added to Platts, but just a zoning change, this is a little atypical, so I would, I would hesitate, hesitate to rec- uh, this becoming a pattern.
Okay.
A- a- and you know, just being something that we, we do as the norm.
Okay.
And that was another thing, I mean, that's a really good point you made, but the other thing is that this, this does a butt up to residential.
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's no transition between B four and residential there.
Right, and, and uh, as you see, it is a PUD, uh, where it's turquoise, and then it's in the county and zone resident, county zone residential on the east side. So everything within is, is a PUD that kinda had a commercial use with some residential, of course, there's Publix across the street. And then the white area you see there is residentially zoned in the county, so we would require a buffer against that property. And that's a landscape buffer that, that is spelled out in the tree ordinance.
I'm gonna move for final adoption with, with staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Hunter.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oh, sorry, call it, Lisa, I apologize, yes, sorry.
Place one.
Aye.
Council President? Council President?
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you, Hunter. Someone introduce the ordinance, one please.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. This, agenda item number six is an ordinance to amend ordinance number eighteen hundred leave policies, section C sick leave specifically, adding number ten paid sick leave donations. Uh, we spoke about this in the work session, this is to kind of to build up our um, our employees where they can help each other out by donating um, time um, to each other. So we'll let that one lay over for a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Yep. Alright, agenda item number seven is an ordinance, can someone please introduce the.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman. It's an ordinance, an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number seventeen fifty-six, Fairhope Code of Ordinances, Article, what is that, six? Yep, garbage and trash collected and disposal section twenty-one seventy-five rates. Alright. I think we spoke about this one, this is um, we're going up on our rates, um, we saw in the budget, we're a little bit at a deficit in our sanitation area. So we have to look at that again. We'll have to let, we'll let that one lay over as well. Agenda item number eight is a site plan extension request. Applicant is S E Civil, acting on behalf of the owner F S T R W L L C. Is requesting a hundred and eighty-day extension of the site plan approval that was granted for the property located at the northeast corner of Magnolia Avenue and North Church Street, known as Vatten. The site plan was approved on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Move to grant the extension.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I think we extended this, I think we had some utility issues, we talked about it in the work session, so we're given the opportunity to extend.
That place I said I thought I wish I could afford.
Yeah, that's the one right there on the low, yeah.
That you.
Alright. Any further discussion, guys? I have a motion and a second, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Alright, agenda item number nine is a resolution, the city of Fairhope supports the Baldwin County uh, multimodal connectivity vision plan and will use it as a planning guide for future projects in order to gain benefits mentioned above and strengthen the quality of life within Baldwin County. This is a good deal right here.
Don't move.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I think that uh, they were thanked uh, in the work session, but yeah, the uh, the Baldwin Trailblazers did a, a really thorough, thorough job on this vision plan, it's, it's pretty impressive.
Was the pedestrian involved as well? The bike and peds?
Pretty much all of that.
Okay, yeah, bike and peds, yeah, great job, guys. Yep, and I think the next one kinda marries it as well. Yeah, Hunter, yes, sir.
Just wanted to mention, um, there was a couple of things where one eighty-one, one oh-four was the only thing, the technical committee for the MPO did recommend we included that intersection because it wasn't originally involved, so.
So it is in here now?
And now not to even working on that, so that was incorporated.
Well, we wanted to emphasize, it's a vision plan.
Yes.
It is.
Visionary plan.
But visions are good, you have to see where you're going. That's for sure. Sometimes we forget. Alright, very good, guys. Do I have a motion and a second? I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number ten is a resolution that the city council approves the selection by the evaluation team for the professional engineering services for RFQ for the city of Fairhope Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, the US Department of Transportation um, SS four grant to Kimberly Horn and Associates, Inc. And hereby authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to negotiate the not-to-exceed fee to be approved by council.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, we discussed this one, this one marries this particular plan as far as transportation and a safety study in our community, which we need. We've heard from many constituents about this, and I'm glad that we're getting it done. Alright. Any further discussion, guys?
I was just gonna point out, Council President, they had a, it was, there was a clear uh, favorite in the, uh, by the selection committee there.
Thank you. Very good. Alright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number eleven is a resolution to award bid number twenty-four zero three one to Taylor Corporation for Fairhope Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks Improvements with the bid proposal not to exceed four million eight hundred thirteen thousand five hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. And as the mayor spoke early, we spoke about this one in a work session, we have a one-point-three grant from ARPA. That's the American Relief Act, I believe. And um, so that helps us a lot with that cost.
So that clarification, that's not additional, right? That is, that comes off the one, the four-point-eight?
Yes.
And it came in less than expected, right?
It did, and we had three great bids.
Yep.
Very marginal, so we, we love that.
I make a motion, will you approve the resolution?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Oh, guys, I forgot, we gotta go, so agenda items um, twelve through fourteen, guys are all on the budget.
Just table.
Yeah, so um, we would like to.
Make a motion to table resolutions twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Okay. I have a motion to table resolutions twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Second. Unless we had a special.
Special call, yeah, we should, yes. Thank you, Council. Alright, I have a, I have a, a, a motion, so I wanna move the business to table these items, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, did I get a second?
You did.
Yes.
Okay, very good, any further discussion?
Just to your point, Mr. Attorney, I think that that was it, whether, we had a little sidebar before the meeting as to we discussed whether to table it or whether to just remove it, in which case it's an indefinite period of time, right?
Yeah, we'll do it indefinitely.
You can table it indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Yeah, we'll probably call a special meeting.
Yeah. Okay, all as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, I have a motion and a second, hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries, alright. Agenda item number fifteen is a resolution that the city council approves the charge off uncollected utility account for fiscal year twenty eighteen in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number sixteen is a resolution that the city council authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute an extension of the PFM Financial Advisory Advisors LLC Engagement Letter Agreement for the city of Fairhope for professional consulting services and financial advisor for, for year-long services with a not-to-exceed retainer of twenty thousand dollars. This professional service is exempt from formal bidding per Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one sixteen fifty-one A three. We're just extending the contract here. Yep.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number seventeen is a resolution to the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of the renewal of twenty-eight annual subs- subscriptions of citizen software for the IT department from Online Solutions LLC and authorized procurement allowed by the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section forty-one sixteen fifty-one A eleven. The total amount is forty-two thousand dollars even.
Don't move.
Yep, Jeff spoke about this.
Second.
Just passed through costs. Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number eighteen is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of elevator repair at the Fairhope Public Library by TK Elevator that is on the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract and therefore does not have to be let out for, to bid, the total cost of the repair is nine thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Additionally, city of Fairhope approves to pay fifty percent of the repair upfront per the Sourcewell contract.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number nineteen is a resolution to award bid number twenty-three zero five seven, request for the proposal program administrative services for the city of Fairhope First Responder Safety Room to Uncompass Three Sixty, Inc., for a total cost not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five dollars, two hundred and four and eighty-four cents.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Grant monies.
Grant monies, yes.
This portion is it covered by the grant as well?
Yes. Director Engineer Johnson spoke on that, he said this money was in the grant, so. Said that in work session. Alright. Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, Council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty is a resolution to the city council authorizes acceptance of a Department of Justice Appropriation Act grant of two hundred thousand dollars, grant number fifteen P B J A twenty-four G G zero two eight six, and authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to sign all necessary documents. The finding, or the funding will be used to develop a comprehensive, community-based program to educate school-aged children and adults on the dangers of fentanyl and lifesaving techniques if exposed. Alright, uh, Ms. Love spoke on this, I think this is a great program.
I move to accept the grant.
No match on this program, all, all monies um, to help our kids and our, our community. I have a motion, can I get a second? Alright, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
We wanna address the gentleman that spoke prior to the meeting on that, and we'll look at that um, that ordinance again, I mean, it was part of another ordinance that was written about, you know, eleven, twelve years ago, so I will, I will take your comments and and we'll look at that.
Yep.
Thank you.
And you're not the only one that reached out about that, I had some other constituents reach out about that, and I told them we would investigate that, being that we already have one, so that's a major part right there.
There's a distance, I believe, equation in there, and so we'll make sure that there, you know, they do, may have the authority to approve that, and that's not something the council can overturn, but if they're not interpreting the ordinance properly, we can address that.
Yeah. Yes, very good. Alright, guys. Do I have a motion or a second?
Yes, she do.
Yes, she do.
Alright. Any further conversation, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Agenda item number twenty-one is a resolution, the city council approves amendment number two to RFP Program Administrative Services for Working Waterfront and Green Space Project that extends the period of performance to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six and authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute. Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute amendment number two between the City of Fairhope and the Grant Management LLC. We spoke about this. This is an extension.
Make a motion. We approve the extension.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I did want to ask the mayor a question about that. Will they, Grant Management, be paid out of the grant funds for that? There's no additional cost to the city, right?
Right. All right. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 22 is a resolution that the city council approves the amendment number two to RFPQ Engineering Services Contract for the Fairhope Restore Working Waterfront and Green Space Project that extends the period of performance to October 31, 2026, and authorize Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute amendment number two between the City of Fairhope and Goodwin Mills &amp; Kwood LLC.
Make a motion. Will you approve the resolution?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. These are both just extensions on the, on the working waterfront that we had with our contractors. All right. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 23 is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan, on behalf of the City of Fairhope, to execute a purchase agreement and all closing documents related to the sale of the Barnwell Recreational Land Property from Most Reverend Thomas J. Rowdy, Archbishop of the Mobile, a corporation, sold for a purchase price of 1.1 million and allocated funding out of the reserves.
Don't move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yep, one more question for the mayor. Mayor, do we have to petition the state to annex that into the city, or since that's owned by the city, will that, it won't automatically become city property? Well, I mean, municipal limits, right?
They would have to. Yeah.
We're allowed to do that.
Yes. It's a great question.
Maybe some issue that Barnwell, this whole district, that we've got to work through as well. I talked to Hunter and Richard about that, and there may be some issues with that, but I thought that we just couldn't, you can't forcibly annex, but the owner of the property can ask.
He can ask.
I thought.
There's a process to leave the landmark district, and we're navigating through that.
I got you. So there's a interim step.
So. Yeah. Yeah. And we knew that. Like, I think we, we kind of, yeah, we talked about that.
You've had those discussions.
But, yep. All right, guys. Motion and a second, Lisa?
Yes, she do.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion, guys? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 24 is a resolution that the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherri Sullivan to execute a contract for professional services for closing costs and title insurance on the Barnwell Recreation Land Purchase with Capeski &amp; Britt LLC, with a cost not to exceed $15,000.
So moved on the resolution.
Yep. Have a motion and a second. We talked about this. This is merit to agenda item number 23. This is just a resolution saying that we're only going to spend this amount of money on our closing costs and any other fees. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, guys? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Agenda item number 25 is a request. Fairhope East K6 Parent Teacher Corporation in collaboration with the Fairhope West Parent Teacher Partnership and J. Larry Newton Parent Teacher Organization are requesting permission to close the streets in downtown Fairhope on Saturday, February the 8th, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for the 10th Annual The Pirate Dash, and requesting electricity at the starting-ending point of the race on the Bluff with barricades at major roads intersections to protect our runners. The Pirate Dash will begin at the end, and end at the same location on Magnolia Avenue on the Bluff, Henry George Park. We do, this is traditional here, guys.
Make a motion. Will you approve the request?
Second.
And I asked chief, were there any issues? She said no. So any, have a motion and a second. Any further conversation or discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right. Agenda item number 26 is public participation. This is for the good of the order. Please come up. Please, let me ask of you, as, hold on, ma'am, let me ask one thing so we can stay in order here, okay? Let me ask that if you hear someone, ask your question, please let that be, okay? All right, please don't come up, I'm just asking. Don't have redundancy, the same things over and over. If someone hits you, they got you, okay? Just let that stand. We're just asking that. All right, thank you. You have three minutes. Come up, give your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Donna Alsa.
Hello, Ms. Donna.
I live at 11623 County Road 1. So my question is around what, and thank you, Mayor Sullivan, for addressing that upfront, and Corey for addressing that earlier. One thing I do want to mention is, I don't think that the people who came tonight is here to divide. We're all a family. We all live in the same community. We're here as a family to protect ourselves and to protect each other. And so saying that to say, I don't think it's any kind of division that's being put in front of you guys. It's more or less around our concern around things that has been put on social media. For me, I have, I'm a doctor, and I do my research, and I did do some research around this and found documents at a federal level where there are signatures, and your signature that you signed, that was shared on September the 12th or the 14th of this year for Biden to implement the Welcoming of the Refugees Program, which they're trying to reinstate, the USRAP Program, which is what you referenced that started in 1980, correct? And so, you know, just saying that to say, I want to clarify and make sure that we're all on the same page, that just because your name got signed in 2022, but it wasn't shared until 2024 of this year, that that does not mean that without discussing with our community, nothing like that will be approved or take place, and it'll be shared with the community that will be a part of the discussion so we can all have our input, because we do pay tax dollars, and we don't, I mean, I was a single mom for 23 years. I don't want to pay for somebody else. I'm still paying for my own education, okay? And so I think it's beneficial if we all have our input and we all work together to resolve the issue, if, if and when it does come forward, and I'm afraid it might come forward, depending on how the outcome is in November. So that's really all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Donna.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Ann Sealy. I live at 8528 Lakeview Drive in Fairfield, Texas. Thank you. I don't believe social media either, everything, the majority of what I read, so I made two calls to Montgomery and two calls to DC today, and I just wanted to share about that. First of all, I called Lieutenant Governor Will Ainsworth's office, and they had heard about this. And they did say, and I quote, "The letter from the Fairhope Council did not help those concerned about illegal immigration." And I want to say that I support legal immigration, and I think most people in Fairhope probably do. You know, we do, but not illegal immigration. Also, Governor Ivey's office, I called her office. Will Ainsworth and Governor Ivey's office said this is a federal issue. So we really have, y'all don't have the power to do anything. Neither does Governor Ivey. This comes from the, you know, it's a federal decision. Unfortunately, it is. I talked to two people from Jerry Carl, Congressman Jerry Carl's office, and he said that what they were doing, probably it's been said now, was sending a letter to Mayorkas because, oh, they were aware of this too. And they said, "There's a program called the CHNV Pro Program that the state of Alabama is experiencing an unanticipated influence of tens of thousands of Haitians to small towns where resources are already strained, and the sudden surge of people has created safety, health, infrastructure, and economic concerns for residents. Hundreds of Haitian children have entered local school systems, fluent only in Haitian Creole, leaving teachers and administration at a loss to how to manage their needs, given what's happened, you know, with the, with the Haitians." And Alabama towns, I mean, it's, they have not received notice of this happening. And so when it happens, we may not have any notice at all. And I think that's what everybody's concern is, is that they're distraught here and we don't have any notice. He also, Jerry Carl, is going to do some research on this program to see what he can do, but they may not be able to stop it because the Biden-Harris Administration, they're sending these people to small towns, not just in Alabama, but as you know, all over the country, and the towns don't even know they're coming, they just show up. And I think that's what freaked people out, is that it would happen here as well. I did call Senator Tuberville's office. I have not heard from him, but they told me that he would call back. And Congressman Jerry Carl's office was the most helpful, and they said that they would keep us informed, but they said that we may not get any notice if they do come. And so it's hard to refute it, that they're not coming, when you're not going to get a call saying they're here, you know, or they're on the way. That's just what I was told when I made my calls. Thank you.
Ma'am, hang on a second. Council President, may I respond to one thing? One thing you said was that you talked to Lieutenant Governor Ainsworth's office.
Yes.
And he said the letter from the Fairhope City Council did not help.
From the, well, not council, the whole council, the city council member, the city council member.
Okay.
Will Ainsworth's office said that. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is John Cutwright. I live at 434 Colony Drive. I've been a resident of Baldwin County for about 30 years now. And I came here like all of these good citizens, doing their civic duty, and that is to come to these meetings whenever they have an issue, whether they know it's factual or not. Now, sitting here tonight, I've heard a couple of things from several of the members up here that we were kind of made fun of because we bought into a hoax or given information. Well, we were. That's how I felt, okay? Now you're not, and I was also preached to, okay? I've got plenty of compassion. I've got as much as you do, okay? My heart is good. I know it's good, okay? And we like people to come here legally, okay? But you know what's going on in Spring Hill, Ohio, okay? There's 20,000 people up there that Spring Hill residents didn't buy into, okay? And we're here, I think, most of us, because we don't want that to happen here.
That's right.
I'd love to have lunch with you if you want to go, and we can have a discussion back and forth. Because again, my heart's good.
Yes, sir.
Okay? But I'm, don't make that fun of these people for being here.
I'm not making fun of me.
Sir?
I was more making fun of me.
Well, but, but that's how you came, I wasn't the only one, okay? And I'm just, you know, sometimes you need to hear how you're coming across to the, to your folks out here, okay? And we're here wanting to make sure that our community stays good and safe. Fentanyl's killing too damn many people, okay? And people are getting, you know, crimes out of, out of it, okay? That's why I'm here, okay? Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Good evening, y'all. Thank y'all for letting me speak. Mayor, thank you, city council. My name is Matt McKenzie. I'm one of the Baldwin County Commissioners. Thank, there's two, there's three things. Two, for the donated sick leaf, thank y'all for doing it for the employees. We did that for the county employees not long ago, and that's an, that's an awesome tool to have. The second thing, $8 million for the parks, that's awesome. Thank y'all for doing it. I wish we could do that worth our county commission. Hopefully in the future we can do that, too, if I can get the other three to agree. To listen to you do your agenda, that's awesome. I'll be the chairman in November, and I think I'll do it a little bit different, but I just wanted to say that. We don't know as a county either what's going to happen here. We don't know who's coming here and what. I just, I want the citizens to be aware of that. As a county commissioner, we don't know that either. And I hope that the federal government, if they know at the time, will let us know what happens and give us advanced notice where we can let the citizens in this county know what's going on. And you know as well as anybody, we all immigrants somewhere down the line. We're not against immigration. We just wanted to do it the right way. And, but I just wanted to say that as a county commissioner and to let the citizens of this county know that we're, we're going to work with the federal partners and the local municipalities also. So I just want to say thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. Representative?
Thank you. Thank you for, residents for coming. You're state representative, I'm Jennifer Fidler, and I have been doing a little bit of research of my own today, and a lot of what I found agrees with what Ms. Ann Sealy talked about. At first, I wanted to just figure out, you know, a little bit about what was happening. Read the article. The article says 1,000 Haitians are coming to Baldwin County. Is that true? This is part of a HCNV, Haitian-Cuban.
Cuban-Haitian Entrance Program. Yes, ma'am.
Venezuelan, yeah, Nicaraguan. Yeah, and if you look at, up on the internet, it really describes, you know, the whole program, and 30,000 a month can be, come in participants of various places across the nation. The program, just as Ms. Sealy was talking about, it does, we don't know exactly enough about where they're going to be dropped. I did talk to Congressman Barry Moore a little bit about it today because it's happened in his area and his community. The, usually this program, the staffing agencies are utilize, utilizing this program. And then they are placing as a staffing for the employment opportunities. And usually it's, in other places in Alabama, it's been in the poultry industry. Not sure, you know, what industry it may be here in Baldwin County. I did talk with a farming group. They, this is not the same program as the H2A program, which is the program that the farmers use to harvest their crops. It's a short-term program. This HCB.
Cuban-Haitian, Nicaraguan, Venezuelan.
Program is supposed to be a short-term program, but still a two-year program. So with that, I, I'm still trying to find the point person that's, so I can verify, like, if there are this many people coming in. I've had a hard time trying to find that point person, and I have contacted the governor's office. We have contacted our congressman. We have, on our staff level, have been investigating this and have not found that point person who administers the program so that we can verify how many people are coming and if they are coming. I have talked to Sheriff House Mac, and he does not know of any mass influx of people coming to our area. And he's talked to the Department of Homeland Security so that we can report that. With that, I am listening to issues that these things could be causing, and one of them that Congressman Barry Moore talked to me about was insurance. As, but I'm listening to our people to see what other issues that we may be having. As you know, we have a large influx of non-English-speaking folks in our, more of our rural schools, not necessarily Fairhope, but Silver Hill has 26% of their class is non-English speaking. There's an issue with teaching English to those students. Somerdale's 30%, and in Baldwin County, we have upwards of 40% of our students that are not English-speaking or having, or English learning, they're trying to learn English. And so those are the issues that we see as immigration through the border has come through that's existing today. But can I answer any more questions? Because I have done a little bit of. They're, they do have to have a sponsor. That is what it talks about on the internet, and they're supposed to have a card, which, and they're supposed to be taking care of their medical issues, which has been an issue in. And sometimes, yeah. So the mayor's talking about that some of these sponsorships are coming through local not-for-profit organizations that are sponsoring the, the folks to come here. From, it's, some of these things, you know, you answer that off the top of my head about the driver's license. It does talk about social security numbers on there.
Yes.
So I was shocked with that.
They're added to the SSI.
But on the state level, we can do some things. And we, this is one reason I will be listening. I want to hear from the residents on issues that are, that they are seeing, because if, we may be able to have state law that can, can help with these issues. So I remind you that we have an office here at the Fairhope Courthouse, and the number is 251-990-4615. And if there's anything I can help with, I'm, I'm right here. So I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, State Fair.
So you're saying that they're not being brought to Fairhope, that they're being brought to Baldwin County?
The article stated, and this is the portion that I have not been able to find a second source to confirm, that there's 1,000 coming to Baldwin County. Usually, they choose rural areas, they choose places that, they'll be in an apartment, and they may have 10 in an apartment room, or what have you, and then they're getting out and working. That's what I know about, but I haven't been able to find that second source. So we have one source saying they've spoken to Haitians and Haitian ministers that are getting this information. Haven't been able to find a second source. That's what I'm looking for.
Jake Palmer said that.
That was personal.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all will be relieved I'm changing the subject. But you may not be relieved, because I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
First, a little history.
What's, give your name and your address.
Jody Harper. I'm at 104 Cliff Drive.
Thank you.
Maybe y'all can answer, just as background, the waterfront project, that area, that park, at one time, or forever, I think, was part of the colony property. Is that, is part, was Fairhope Colony, was it?
You mean free, single tax?
Single tax. I'm sorry. I'm calling the wrong thing.
You got me over on, on 44.
It was deeded to the city, and when was that?
Whoa.
100 years ago.
100.
96.
30.
Oh, it was deeded, okay.
A long time ago.
But was control of decision-making and everything, that's when that, so the cities had all deciding control of that whole area, the pier and everything, okay? These are things I didn't know. I was just curious. I just knew that originally, it was part of a very long vision. I was shocked to see that part of this revitalization means ripping up the beautiful wide sidewalks that were down in the park. They're being jackhammered up.
They're going back.
They're going back.
They'll be better.
Yeah, it'll be better. This is a restore.
But was that, I just, I think that was a, all this money came forward for this, and, and we just kept hearing, it has to be spent right there. It has to be spent on, on the waterfront project. But it seems like some of this money is just being wastefully used. I look at the, I live here in Love Mobile Bay. I would have loved to seen some look towards helping Mobile Bay keepers, or looking at other bigger issues we have in this area that affect that water that we so love and want to be on, instead of make-work, is what it feels like, things being ripped up to be redone. And...
Go ahead, finish.
And, and some of that walkway has been thrown in as rap, and rip, riprap, or whatever. They've just thrown it in the bay. So they ripped up all the sidewalk and just tossed it in, in front of the break front that they're supposed to be redoing.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I just wanted some answers to why that was being, why was that necessary?
If you will share your information with Lucy, your number, I'll be happy to call you tomorrow, so we can make sure the meeting continues to flow. But I'm happy to answer all those questions.
One other question, though. You're, I've also been told there were going to be metal railings installed on what is a fishing pier. Is that correct? Are they ripping out the railings off of the Fairhope pier?
We will be replacing the railings, but it's not metal.
Metal. Okay, good. So that was a false information. All right. Just know that we're be really happy when we can go back down there and walk.
Yeah, I know. Yes. I know.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Jody.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not here to beat a dead horse, but the last couple of years have been horrible.
Tell your name and your address.
Yeah, I'm Abby Unwrath. I'm actually in Magnolia Springs, so a little bit outside of Fairhope. But my family's been through a lot the last couple of years, and I just wanted to share a little something as it relates to tonight. I'm a Baldwin County resident. My mother-in-law was recently killed in a tragic automobile accident in Grand Rapids, Michigan. This was in June 2022. She was not distracted. She was not on her phone. She was driving under the speed limit, seatbelt buckled, several car distances away, most likely with her hands at 10 and 2. She was as cautious and careful and law-abiding as they come. Born and raised in that area, she served at the local school for over 20 years, volunteered relentlessly at her church. She loved her community dearly, and devoted her life to it in many ways. As she drove to pick up cabinet hardware to complete the dream kitchen she had worked on and waited 25 years for, her car rapidly approached a vehicle in front of her on US 131. She slowed and brought her vehicle to a complete stop, as she realized that car in front of her was actually in reverse on the interstate. Though she saw him, though she controlled her own vehicle, another vehicle behind her didn't have the time or luxury of stopping. This woman was 37 years old in the car behind her. My mother-in-law was hit from the rear at full speed of 77 miles per hour by another innocent woman. Then her car imploded into the driver in front. They were both killed in the accident. Both Christians, both community servants, one a teacher, one a nurse, one single mother of two young children, now being raised without parents. The driver of the initial vehicle, in reverse, was a Haitian immigrant named Antoine Hazard. He was the only driver that day to survive. He didn't speak English, so at the scene of the crime, there were dozens of police officers, state and local. He couldn't speak English to describe the account of the accident. It's taken two and a half years for the trial. He was finally charged with two counts of reckless driving, causing death. It's not fun to be here. It seems slightly terrifying to be here, to highlight our thoughts in a space of contentious debate and place ourselves on the chopping block of public conversation and strong opinion, especially in a small town like Fairhope. But as I grow older and my children grow older, I start to recognize the politics and policies around the world, and how it affects everything around us. I feel it's more than wrong to sit back and complain, rather than to rise up and speak out. I'm a mother, a Christian. I'm not racist or uncompassionate. I'm not a bigot. And I'm certainly not an intentional, pretentious, entitled elite. I'm a wife, I'm a mom. I seek to be compassionate and caring and understanding. I seek, seek to live a life that honors God and honors others, that loves others, that gives and cares to for others. I'm also a mom of five daughters. If my desire to help others endangered my own children by removing the locks on my doors and welcoming handfuls of young man, young men, would that be the right thing to do in the name of compassion? Regardless of where they came from or how wonderful they were, my responsibility as a mother requires and demands my care and compassion first to protect my own. It would be neglect, neglectful and even abusive if I put the care of my own girls aside to accommodate the care, the care of others. As tragic as my family's story is, I'm not here tonight to talk about Haitians or even immigration. I'm here to highlight what seems to be a growing concern for many of the citizens of this community, and many across the country as a whole. The real issue I see brewing tonight isn't just about Fairhope or Baldwin County. It's about leadership across this country, even in tiny communities like this one, seemingly usurping the will of the people, the very people in which they were appointed to represent. The issue at hand tonight has struck a chord, as you can see. Not because people are rude, or selfish, or self-serving, or close-minded. It's not because they lean left or right, aren't loving, kind, or generous. A large portion is because somehow, things like this seem to slip through, leaving the citizens concerned and confused as to how they weren't made aware, they weren't made part of the discussion. That type of power and override is what this community, many who are here tonight, and many who aren't, feeling like we are under the overarching rule of control, rather than a community of information, understanding, and democracy. I'm not an expert on any of this, just a concerned mom, concerned resident, grieving daughter-in-law, who sees the issues and inefficiencies around our area, ill-equipped for rapid growth and development, the struggling who are already in front of us. I also see the beauty and blessings of this community, beautiful community. My prayer tonight is that we can come together and realize that we do not need to be pitted against each other, but should strive to come together in understanding and wisdom, to handle the issues around us and ensure that we aren't standing on some ambiguous moral high horse, screaming back and forth in debate, before we ensure that the compassion that we hold for others is, is given to those already in front of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for your last minute.
Hi, Rebecca Watson, 124 Fig Avenue. I'm the chapter chair of Moms for Liberty. I, I wanted to come to address the fact that our schools really cannot take on any more students, especially students that don't speak English. Our, our teachers, our schools are maxed out, our teachers are at capacity. I was at my son's baseball game when I listened to what you were saying. And I want to remind everyone why we're here. We're here because of the letter that you signed. We're not here because we're incompassionate, or we don't have feelings, or we don't care about people. And you know what? All I could think of when you were talking is that you were gaslighting every single one of us. So I'm going to read a little piece of the letter that you signed. "We continually hear from our constituents that they believe in and support refugee resettlement. From greeting refugee families at the airport, to assisting with English language classes, or navigating bus lines, our communities stand welcome." I don't remember you asking anybody that's here how they felt about that. And you signed a letter on behalf of your position representing our city. And that is a huge problem for me. If you're going to sign a letter like that, and you represent our city, then you need to ask the constituents how they feel about it. And yeah, Fairhope's probably not going to be inundated, but Foley, and, and Silver Hill, and Sommerdale, and we've got a lot of communities. And, and, and what she was saying about being in a car accident, in December, I was in a terrible car accident with my two children and my friend's daughter in the car. And I was hit by an illegal immigrant in Baldwin County that did not receive a ticket, that did not go to jail, he had no car insurance, and I called the police department to ask why. Why, if I were to do that without a driver's license or car insurance, I would have been arrested, my car would have been towed. So, they tell me that, that they can go to the DMV, and they can get tags for their vehicle, and they can also get car insurance without a driver's license, right here in Baldwin County. My, my son, and my daughter, and myself were injured in that accident. I had to pay for everything out of my own pocket. And so if, if you're inviting people here, then they need to follow our laws, too, okay? Because we all follow our laws. We pay our taxes, we pay, you know, we pay for our car insurance, and they need to do the same. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Brian Dassinger, and I am a Fairhope resident. I think y'all are familiar with me. I'm here on behalf of Faith Family Freedom Coalition of Baldwin County, and the Baldwin County Conservative Coalition, which is made up of Eagle Forum of Eastern Shore and Orange Beach, Baldwin County Common Sense Campaign, Moms for Liberty, who you just heard from, Health Freedom Alabama, the Pastors Coalition of Baldwin County, and the Pastors Coalition of Mobile Metro. We first came to y'all about a year ago regarding sexually explicit library books in the Fairhope Public Library. We read excerpts, we've been here several times, we've read excerpts, we have sent y'all emails, we've met with some of you outside of, of city council meetings. We have sent a, a resolution signed by my group that, that is very similar to the resolutions signed by the cities of Orange Beach, the city of Prattville, the governor of the state of Alabama, the Republican Party of Alabama, and the Baldwin County Republican Party. We also brought attention to y'all about a drag show that took place in our Fairhope Civic Center, right here in July. We tried to get y'all to, to stop it ahead of time. We were basically told that there was nothing preventing Prism International from renting out the Civic Center for what we revealed was lewd and lascivious behavior. It was adult-oriented, sexually explicit behavior. We sent you pictures, we sent you videos of this. It was, it was coupled with lap dances and lots of $1 tips that's very reminiscent of what would happen in a strip bar. We also have brought to your attention that there, the Fourth Annual Pride Festival is going to be here very shortly. It was originally scheduled for June of this year, but many people in our group and local churches walked the, walked the ground about a month ahead of time and prayed over that ground. And we believe that our prayers were answered when God sent a tornado that morning and canceled that, that event. They have now rescheduled the event. We have sent you resolutions regarding sexually explicit behavior, regarding, I guess, resolutions that have been passed in other similar jurisdictions. We want to know if this city council plans on doing anything to stop this influx of sexually explicit behavior coming into Fairhope. Is that something that y'all are going to do? I will remind y'all that the LBGTQ movement, drag shows, Drag Time Story Hour, and attempts to indoctrinate our children into woke ideologies, is a platform of the Democratic Party. And the last I saw, each and every one of you had an R next to your name. I want to know if y'all are going to do anything about this, because if you're not, then my group is becoming increasingly more interested in maybe putting somebody up against each and every one of you that's going to encompass Christian conservative, family-oriented values. And that election is in 2025. So I'll remind you that we're all watching, and we're ready for you to stand up and do something, or we're ready for a change.
Hey, I'm Trey Cordy, 101 Spring Park Drive. This will be just quick. So, as one of the ladies mentioned before, the reason we're here and all this uproar is because of the letter you signed. Jack said that the city council, none of y'all met about it and all that stuff. That's great, understand, understand that. However, when you wrote it, you were the city, you were a city councilman, you were now the president of the city council. And I would request that you write another letter and rescind your position. And specifically state that you do not represent the city of Fairhope on this position, because I don't know how it all works, but it seems pretty reasonable and logical to me that no one wants the refugees in their town, not in my backyard. So when the Biden administration, the federal government, which is out of y'all's control, you've already stated, says, where can we send these? Oh, well, there's a city council member in Fairhope who is supporting this. Why don't we send them there? So we're, I'm requesting that you resign another letter to rescind your position as a city council on that, please.
Good evening. My name is Doug Greenard. I'm a resident of Fairhope. And I know we've met before, maybe a time two, or maybe 10. maybe a time two, or maybe 10. And I just want to dovetail on what several people have addressed here this evening, and that is communication. When we were getting roughed up at the very beginning of this session and being told all the things that you were saying, one of the things that I heard from you all was that we needed to communicate. And as Brian Dassinger said, we've been coming for two years, talking about the books in the library, and the response we got was nothing, hardly even a response. We would try to have dialogue with you all, and you just wouldn't even respond. We sent emails, we sent text messages, we offered pictures, videos. What did we get? Not much, nothing, really. We had a drag queen show right here in this building. You asked me, sir, if they were having sex. You did, it's on tape. I got it, I can play it for you if you'd like. It was sexually oriented, we told you all about it, we offered videos, we offered pictures. I even offered to plug into our fabulous audiovisual system here this evening, on the night that it happened, a few days after, and of course, God rest in peace, our second-in-command, who's no longer with us, told us that couldn't happen. Did that provoke really any of you to go any further than Jack? I think he came up to us at the end of the meeting and took a look at a picture or a video, but that was it. Never heard from you guys again. But tonight, tonight, you tell us you're going to communicate, because we've got to communicate. Yet, you have done none of this throughout the entire two-year process that I have come and others have come and shared different things with you. What lends us to believe that you're going to communicate? Words? Words? We've heard them. Actions. Actions. A man is known by his deeds. I think I can speak for everyone, because we've seen what's gone on in communities all over this great state of ours. Enterprise Mayor William Cooper on Haitian migrant influx, our services are strained. Did he ask? Did he send a letter to the Biden administration saying, hey baby, I'm on board? There are human trafficking. Enterprise residents sound the alarm on impact of illegal immigration in Coffee County. Did they ask for it? No, but you did. It's hurting us. Silicaga residents voice opposition opinions on Haitian resettlement during contentious city council meeting. Did the residents of that city ask for it? Who knows what else those residents asked for? Did they address the books? Did their city council address it? I don't know. All I know is what I've experienced here, and from you all who say you want to communicate, we get nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Have a blessed day.
Hi, my name is Linda Dooley, 901 Gayfer Avenue, and boy, it looks like y'all stepped in it, didn't you? One thing I want to say is that I think in order to lower the temperature, as you say, we need a written plan. If these people are coming in, which they may be, put your pen to paper, get us a written plan. How are you going to handle the schools? How are you going to handle our police department? How are you going to handle shelter for these people? Tell us what you're going to do if this does come to pass. Okay? Y'all are sitting up here all smug and everything. Tell us what we need to know. And for you to sit there and gaslight these folks, shame on you. And let me tell you why. This is our forum. This is our forum. We come to the city council to hear what's going on. You said to one of your employees that you don't know if you trust them or not. Well, guess what? I don't know if I trust you. I don't know how honest you are, Councilman Burrell, I don't know if you're honest.
I was talking about the developer.
It doesn't matter, it's still the same principle. I don't know if you're honest. I don't know if you're honest, and you don't know if I'm honest. What I'm telling you is put it to paper and tell us what your plan of action is if this comes to pass. Maybe we'll settle down.
Hi, my name is Deborah Fisher, and I live at 430 Rothley Avenue here in Fair Hope. I'm a new resident here from Oregon, and I came here to get away from all that, and let me tell you something, it happens quick and it happens fast, and I'm really glad the folks here came out, even though it wasn't really on the agenda. I had to leave my beautiful West Coast, which I love, and if it wasn't so woke, I would still be there. And I will be damned if I'm going to come down here and let it happen here. Okay? Yeah. So, you guys are all on guard now, because all of us don't want this to happen here. And yes, you do need to put a plan in if the federal government does decide to bring people here. We have to have a plan. We can't just let people just come into this community. I came from a very small town of 10,000 people, and let me tell you, the homeless came in like in droves, because they legalized drugs in 2020. We had everybody bringing their drug people to Oregon, okay? We were inundated. I mean, the healthcare alone is so terrible now. And you know, Oregon, California, Washington, I'm originally from California, I'm from San Francisco, I know all about comedy, come all areas, I can tell you a lot. It puts a big, big burden, not only on education, but on our medical system as well. Medical on the West Coast is just terrible. You're waiting months and months and months, because we have so many immigrants. Now, the program that they're talking about, they're making these people legal, so it's not that they're illegal, it's just that you can't just bring thousands of people into a community and expect a community just to be able to absorb that. So we really do have to, it's nothing about being heartless, nothing about that. It's just simple economics, first and foremost. But we really do have to have a game plan, and we really need to figure out one soon. You guys don't want to end up where I just came from, trust me.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Diana Yumbucker, 127 Oak Bend Court. It's my first council meeting, wow, what a wonder this is. I just want to stress three things. They've all been brought up, I'm not going to be here long. When I heard what our mayor said, and then I heard what each of you said, I felt like, okay, you're all saying, don't worry about it, it's not going to happen, we're not going to approve this, don't worry about it. It doesn't matter whether you approve it, it's going to happen. That's one thing. So trying to calm everybody down by saying, don't worry about it, we don't support it, that's just platitudes, that's empty words with no teeth in them. Okay. Then, yes, what are you going to do? What plan do you have? If you know this is happening all over the country, if you don't know it's not happening all over the country, I don't know where you've been, but it is happening all over the country without warning, without approval of the communities, we need to plan. We plan for hurricanes, this is going to be far worse than a hurricane. And then, the third thing, was something this lady just said, and now it's gone totally out of my head, I hate being a senior citizen. But anyway, if I think of it, maybe someone else will remember what she said that was so important to her. Education in the medical system has been restrained on the West Coast. Yeah, but it's basically, those were the two things, and then hers just hit me at the last minute. But really, don't just try to calm us down, give us answers, that's what we want. We know it's going to happen, maybe not in Fair Hope, but it's coming to our county. It's counting, it's already in this state that are already affected by it. So, it's here.
Hi, Sue David, 135 Diestran Street. My husband and I, we ran away, literally ran away from Washington, Bellingham. When our house was an elementary school bus stop, I was finding heroin needles. This is a million-dollar neighborhood. We lived in a 1,080 square foot, the smallest house in the neighborhood, and I went to the city and I handed them needles, and they said, it's not our problem, they have rights. I'm sorry, no, once you open the door, they will come by the thousands, they did in our community. We ran away so fast, our couch did not fit in the truck. My husband took a chainsaw to it so we could get here. We closed during Sally. It is not good. You have to have laws, they have to abide by them. You have no idea what the West Coast is like, no idea. What you see on TV, times it by 20, because that's what you're going to get.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Corvo, I live at 20 Burlington Drive, Fair Hope, Alabama. I've been here, it doesn't really matter how long I lived in Fair Hope, I am a resident of Fair Hope. So, I just want to say thank you so much to our councilman members for, one, listening to all of this, really do appreciate it. I also have been here for a while now, and I just want to appreciate how welcoming the community is in allowing us to exist and to speak our peace in our minds. I hear a lot of fear coming in from all around us and a lot of people behind me, and this is off-topic and something I feel like that our community, if they're so concerned about what's going on in the community, to maybe take a look at the mobile baykeeper and pay attention to what's going on in our bay and what the mobile baykeeper is trying to do by keeping our bay cleaned, if we're going to be very upset with what's going on around us. Maybe take a look at our environment a little bit more. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I've spoken a couple of times again, but I'll just rehash it. My name is Edward Bowles, I live at 502 Coward Street. I just want to speak to everyone that hasn't been here before, just on my background, I have 33 years in law enforcement, 30 years as a special agent with the Drug Enforcement Administration. Now, I'm going to speak on the crime aspect of all this. Is Fair Hope Police Department ready for the influx of these people? And I'll equate it, I worked in Maine and New Hampshire and different places, and Maine opened the doors for Somalians to come in.
Lewiston.
Lewiston and Portland.
We were there.
And they have more crime, gangs, violence, and the thing they brought in is a thing called CAT, which I'm sure you don't know what it is, but it's a plant that is brought in from Africa that has similar qualities, quantitative, as cocaine. Now, my question to you specifically, is Fair Hope Police Department ready to handle this? What's your answer on that?
No.
No, we don't have anybody.
You don't have an answer, thank you.
Hello, gentlemen and lady, my name is Debbie Greenard, 311 Wakefield. Looks like the last two years we've been here fighting the books, drag brunches, all this other stuff going on, and all of a sudden, we hit a hot button and look at the crowd. All I have to say to all of you, including you, mayor, is you have awakened the sleeping giant, and I want to put you all on notice, if you don't start doing your job, you will all be out next year.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Dernan, I live on Hemlock Drive in Fair Hope, Alabama. I'd like to start by saying that Councilman Martin, you have made a statement to, could you, if you would have made a statement to 1819 News, instead of refusing, it would have clarified your position, but you failed to do so. As a matter of fact, that seems to be the theme of this council, you have failed. You have failed to protect our children from pornography in the children's section of the library. You have failed to protect our Fair Hope sense of family by allowing sexually inappropriate strip shows in our taxpayer-funded civic center. Mr. Martin failed to support the free speech of Fair Hope citizens by offering an amendment to do away with this public comment period at city council meetings. It is evident that this council refuses to take a stand. If this concerns any of you or any of you, I would encourage you to get in contact with You're all on notice, your jobs are going to be short.
All that goodwill from the parental leave, I'm about to burn every bit of it up. Dev Wakely, same address, and I hope you all are on notice, because this has always been a political movement, that's all it's about, hitting on one thing after another until they find something they think they can gin up enough outrage about. Haitian immigrants, both those here, documented and undocumented, commit crimes at lower rates than native-born Americans do. According to the Cato Institute, I hate having to cite them, but it's true. Folks, I have stood in front of the League of the South, I've stood in front of the Klan, and this is the Klan in slacks. All they are is here.
Don't boo in, please, ma'am, keep the crowd, please, keep the booing and all that to yourselves.
I know what they are. Y'all know what they are too, though you have to be political, you have to be polite to them. They are here to take over, not to benefit anybody else on the basis of God sending tornadoes to attack people they don't like. They're here to try to gain dominion over Fair Hope, Alabama, the United States, and the world, no matter who it hurts, and that's how they go about it. They find populations of people to attack, marginalize, and hurt. Y'all are in the way, because you're trying to run a city, like competent legislators do. They're not competent. All they are is a bundle full of rage and hatred, and I want you to remember that and protect yourselves from them. That's who they are, that's who they've always been, they're the same folks as 50 years ago, they're the same folks I faced down at the Coleman Juneteenth Celebration. That's who they are, that's who they've always been, and it's who they always will be.
Hey, ma'am, 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 we're not doing that, we're not doing that, we're going to have, we're not doing that, okay?
Do you understand what I just told you? We're stopping with the comments, if you don't stop with the comments to him, I'll remove you. It's simple, okay? We don't have to agree with what he said, just keep the comments to yourself. Whoever it was, I'm going to remove you.
All right. Does anybody else want to come up and express themselves?
1587-5, Kenny Drive East, Devin Rigsby. You know, it's funny, I got to think about history, in 2010, January, when they had the massive earthquake, where was this? We didn't bring nobody in, we didn't need to bring anybody in, but we did send our US Coast Guard, Mobile, US Air Force, Pensacola, we sent them over to work. I was on standby for their teams, team I didn't have to go with. But another thing came along down the road, I got in touch with great instructors with the federal government, people I'm not going to say their name, because their name is not supposed to be relative here. I got to work with them in counterterrorism operations, CQB, Camp Lejeune, Combat Medicine, TCCC, became an active shooter instructor, and we got to really realizing that in 2015, you had ISIS, we can call it ISIS, whatever the government wants to call it. If you look at the flux of people from Syria, some were good, some were bad, they used that flux of people to move across the Mediterranean. And then, let's see, was it 2016, 2015, November 2015, the France incident, 49 people lost their lives that night. I was in Homestead Air Force Base on call with a team ready to go. And the thing was, they missed that vetting. And when they miss a vet, guess what? They show up, they introduce themselves, other people, they figure out, we're going to make something happen. Not the one guy, two guy, three guys, but we're going to introduce something new to that population. And what happens to that population is fear. Well, if they're going to bring fear here, well, the fear is already in this room. They're on y'all. I'm trying to just be the fact sailor. I've seen the paperwork. I've been there. I've sat in rooms with pinpoints with government officials and they tell us, this is what's going to happen. This is what you're going to do. This is the team you're going to link up. This is where you're going to go. And I worked with Homeland Security Intersearch and Rescue Outfits over there in Louisiana in the last hurricane, 2017. I was down there in Sarasota looking after 5,000 people. 5,000 people that spoke four different languages, people, in one school. And the problem was, I couldn't communicate with half of them. We were short-staffed, fire department, SROs, LEOs, teachers. They were stealing the computer keyboards when they left. We were allowed to do nothing. I was in full gear, looking after 19 pregnant women from a women's shelter. And I had to stand with another SRO at the door until they all left. And that was the biggest thing that I saw was, if we don't vet these people 110%, give them a job. If they want to be an American, you know, National Guard of Alabama will take them. Give them four years, make them become an American. Make them not want to go back to Haiti, introduce themselves into our culture and do it legally. That's all I want that to happen. These people here, they all paid taxes. You guys work hard. I don't want to be here. I want to be at the gym. But at the same time, my training from the government, thousands and thousands of man-hours, has showed me that I'm not going to look at them as who they were. I'm going to look at them as a human being, what they can do for our community. And that's it.
Thank you, sir.
May I ask this question from here? I don't walk very well.
Yes, ma'am.
Betty Riley, 317 Lakewood Drive. My question's for the city attorney. Do our elected officials have any restrictions on what they can say using their title?
Yes. There's no one, she's asking, can one person have?
No one, no one council member can act on behalf of the city.
That's right.
But can he use his title?
He can say, I'm Joe Smith County, you know, County Commissioner, and I think I support this. Doesn't mean anything to the county commission. Same thing here. You can say you're Joe Smith and, you know, place one, place five, doesn't have anything to do with anything because it takes the entire governing body to make decisions.
Well, I know that, but I just wonder if a person can use that title because that's how we got in this mess. He used his title to get, to bring attention.
What would he use to make that email?
I just wonder if it's an illegal thing that restricts them in any way.
Nothing illegal about it.
I just was going to clarify for everybody, you know, I think we've all stated, we're all against illegal immigration first and foremost. But even the type of legal potentially immigration that has been brought to our attention, we do not support a massive relocation of refugees or resettling here in Fairhope. I mean, I think, yeah, I think Councilman Martin explained the letter he signed a couple of years ago. But we're not in support of that and we don't have any reliable or credible information to believe that something is happening immediately or intently. I hear what y'all are saying about the fact that we should be prepared because there may be something down the road that we don't see coming that's out of our control and we need to have a plan to react to that when that time comes. But I just want y'all to know, the article that sort of stirred this up, I just don't think it had any direct basis. We haven't heard anything to suggest that people are coming here in the next weeks or months or anything. So I just want to make sure y'all are aware of that.
I want to piggyback on that, yeah. And so, yeah, so that, you know, as far as the communications go, I agree with everything that everybody said about communications. There was nothing to communicate as far as we did. I mean, like I said, I got a text message about six days. What's this about? I mean, we haven't had conversations that we could communicate as far as planning goes. That's not bad thoughts at all. I tell you what I would worry about, though. You make a good plan, the federal government may say, they're prepared, we'll send them there. You know? And so you got to just balance that. I'm not saying they would. I'm not saying it's not a bad idea. Maybe you have one, you don't advertise it because they may say, well, they must want them because they planned for it. So you have to think about those things as well. They're really good comments. I mean, yeah, you probably ought to say, well, if the federal government forces this down our throat, which would be what it would be if that occurred, you got to look at all those options, what-ifs, you know? So this just came up six days ago. I mean, the first time I heard about it. So have I made a plan in the last six days? No, I've been answering text messages and emails and phone calls for about six days, to be honest with you. And rightfully so. That's fine. I don't mind doing that. It's part of our duty.
All right. Yes, who's, yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Manisha Martin. I live at 829 Summer Lake Street. And Corey Martin is my husband. And I would just like to comment on a couple of things that have been stated here. Number one, he signed that in '22, 2022, which was two years ago, when the Ukraine war was at full swing. I think, just my opinion, that if that letter would have came out then, no one would have said one word about it. Number two, everyone keeps saying illegal immigrants. They're not illegal, okay? Nobody wants illegal immigrants to come here. So let's get some facts and let's put them out there. Number two, no, number three, the reporter or person who wrote the article in 1819 never came to my husband and asked for any type of comment verification until after the article was written. Now, I have a journalism degree. That's not how you do business, okay? If you are supposed to verify all sources and document everything, she did not do that. She chose to try and get comments after the fact and he refused because she tainted everything. First of all, she said Haitians, which puts everyone on alert. Everybody has this fear factor thing going on. Haitians. If you go back and you look at everything, it's, there's no ethnicity related to any of it. It's just about a resettlement program, okay? So I just want to put that out there and let us know. I want to say that I think you all are doing a very good job. And if, let me put y'all on those, you all think you all can do a better job or you have people in line that can do a better job, bring them on.
Hello, ma'am.
I'm Sharon Coffey. I live at 18172 South Section. And all I want to say about the whole situation is we, the people, everybody has one vote and the way to take care of this, it will take a while, is to change the administration in Washington.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Stephen Sofianos, 20260 Zool Avenue. I just want to point out, nobody here has said anything about where anyone's coming from or what they look like. Everybody's concern has been about safety, okay, and people upholding the laws and the things that we pay for as taxpayers in the community. We don't want to be overburdened. I mean, last year, we're getting messages about Savior Water because we don't have enough water. But all of a sudden, there's developments everywhere and we're talking about migrants. So I mean, we just need to, you know, let's level Savior. I just want to say, like, I want to end this, guys, with how we started. We started tonight with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Okay? So remember your faith. Don't just talk it, live it, okay? That's what we all want. We want a good, we want good Christian leaders in our public office because this is one nation under God. And we want you to uphold your duty to us as citizens, okay? Or we'll find somebody who will. And that's not a threat, that's a promise, okay? We want good people. I've read every one of your bios. You claim to be good people. Your families, your families are here. I mean, you've got kids. You've got kids in school or you've had kids in school. Do them right, okay? If you do them right and you can look at your families every night and look at yourself in the mirror, then you're doing us right too. And I'll just leave it with that. Like, practice your faith in your job and everything you do and honor your duty as US representatives, Fairhope representatives.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn?
All right, second. All right, I got a motion and a second. Meeting adjourned.